Hey, everybody. I think we're ready to start. I want to thank you for coming. I'm Susan Allen. I'm the managing editor of the Bennington Banner, and I will be the moderator tonight. I want to thank Cat TV for actually coming up with the idea for this. Hooray for them and for co-sponsoring with us. I think this is a great event. We have two open seats. There's six candidates running. There's a variety of positions sitting next to me up here on all kinds of issues. So the voters have a really great selection come town meeting day on March the 7th. I'll quickly go over the format. We're going to start with opening remarks, then some questions by me. Cat TV helped me come up with those questions as well. Then questions by you. I want to thank you, and if you have any last minute questions, feel free to write them on a piece of paper and drop them off to me. And then we'll have closing remarks. I'm going to ask you to hold your applause until the end. That's tough to do. I know that myself. But it really slows things down when everybody applauds. So I'm going to be kind of strict about that and mean. And I hope all the phones are off in the room. And Mike is our timekeeper. We're going to hold our candidates here to some time limits. Any questions before we start? Well, I think we'll dive right in. The candidates are Asher Edelson. We did this in alphabetical order, if anyone's wondering. Jack Rositer-Mundley, Sarah Perrin, Donald Washam, Nancy White, and Ed Woods. We are going to start with opening comments, and I'm going to start at this end for opening comments. And let Ed go first, and each candidate gets two minutes. All yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Sue, and the Bennington Banner, and Cat TV for pulling it together. I think it's an important event. Thank you to my co-candidates for joining tonight. It's a great opportunity for voters to get to know who might be representing them, right? Sue, I've been in your seat many times during these events. This is my first time on the other side, so I appreciate the contrast. Most people know me for my years of what I like to think is service to the Bennington community. Many people know me as the longtime publisher of the Bennington Banner up until a few years ago, when we sold the Bennington Banner. In that role and as offshoot to that role, I have spent a number of years in many areas, working in many areas of the community. I don't need to go through a long list with you, but what the outcome was from and is from time spent in nonprofits and community organizations and partnerships, it builds, you know, sort of the background and the ability to manage, to recruit, to problem solve, to create and bridge relationships, to dig through issues, to understand them, to listen. I think that listening is a key. And providing information. I think that I hear from many folks in the community that I know and have the opportunity to work with that as hard as our government may try, people feel a little bit isolated. So I've learned how to sort of bridge some of those gaps. Let me just close by saying thank you. I just got to stop. We're slipping into our time.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Sue.
Nancy?
Hi, Nancy White. Born in Bennington, grew up in Bennington, went to school in Bennington. I purchased a home here over 30 years ago in the neighborhood I grew up in. I worked for Burger King for 30 years. For the past 10 years, I've been at the hospital in the ICU as an LNA. Watched select board meetings. Started watching as a teenager, and I was always impressed how the select board went out of their way to keep the public involved, to keep us informed. People were encouraged and welcomed to bring any and all questions before the select board. The select board never let the town enter into any deals with any group or organization without plenty of public discussions. Our local form of government has been broken for the past six years. I've watched censorship and entitlement take over the select board. You've seen me at the meetings for the last five years trying to get answers that you have a right to have the answers to. You've watched meeting after meeting where I've asked many of the same questions for two or three years, where officials refused to answer. Last year at a televised meeting, the vice chair read a statement. She started off and said something like, "Our meetings are public, but they're not for the public. The select board does not have to answer citizens." Well, I don't care if it's 1975 or 2023. The job of the select board is to work for the people. We are the stakeholders in the town. There is no group or organization that comes before the citizens. Until there's another group that wants to pay the town budget, the water and sewer budget, the select board works for the public. If elected, I'll welcome anybody to bring questions in like they were able to for 50 years. If a group or organization wants to team up with the town, that's great. But they're going to do it at a select board meeting so the public is aware and can ask questions. And you're going to be involved in the process up until the end.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank you for moderating. I want to thank all the candidates that are here who are running for a position on the select board. I wish them well. You know, one of the reasons that I am running for a position on the select board is frankly, I'm just tired of how things go in Bennington, Vermont. It's time for change here. You know, it's so funny. I've been here 10 years, and I guess I must have had an awakening like a couple of weeks ago. And I thought to myself, you know, you ought to run for office here. And, you know, my background is very interesting because I have an interesting background. I've lived, you know, I worked for the Sheriff's Department for 25 years in Florida. I worked for the Salvation Army nonprofit organization for 15 years. And I worked for a Barrett Alcohol Rehabilitation Center for another 15 years. And all those jobs were simultaneously. So I was a workaholic, basically. My wife hardly ever saw me. But it was a good experience. And I developed very good active listening skills. I developed leadership skills. So I have a plethora of experience in a lot of different areas. This town, and I don't want to sound arrogant or disrespectful to the leaders of this town, but it's time for a change. You're going to hear me say that throughout the evening. If we don't change the way... Listen, you know what we need? We need a mayor. We need a mayor, period, okay? That's what we need. But guess what? They don't want one. And you know why they don't want one? Because it'll step on your toes. We've been needing a mayor for 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Sarah?
Thank you. So I'll be brief. My opening, I moved to Bennington with my husband about 15 years ago, and we quickly planted roots here. In 2014, we purchased the former Christian Science Church and converted it to our home. I found Bennington to be a very welcoming community and quickly became active through a number of local groups. I have been active in the Chamber of Commerce, the Elks Rotary, Bennington Young Professionals, the Bennington Garden Club, excuse me, and many other local organizations. I see some of you out there, actually. For many years, my husband and I have owned and managed several apartments in Bennington. In 2016, we started a concession and catering company that quickly grew into our full-time employment. In 2018, I co-founded the Bennington Food Festival, which will be entering its fifth year this Battle Day weekend with the blessing of the fire department. Thank you. And I was elected to the select board in 2020. Thanks.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. I will echo my fellow candidates in saying thank you to the banner. Thank you to Cat TV. I'm glad to see all of the candidates are here tonight. And also, thank you to everyone who came in person. It's great to see all of you here. I am running for select board sort of as a natural outgrowth of a lot of the other activities that I have found myself involved in since moving to Bennington. I have made it a point of getting as involved as possible in the community over the last several years. And in doing so, I have made it a point of listening to people. My background, my professional background, is in journalism. I was in New York City finishing up my degree, my master's degree in journalism, when I relocated to Bennington during the pandemic. And one of the key elements of journalism is listening. And so for the first couple of years that I was here in Bennington, I really spent a lot of time listening to people. And in doing that, I heard a lot about the areas in the town where action was needed. And as the pandemic began to ease and as I felt I had an understanding of where I could fit into addressing those issues, I began to take action. And I took action by trying to bring people together. And so first, I worked with a couple of folks, and we started a reading group around social justice issues so that people could become more informed about them. And then, crucially, we weren't just going to stop at being informed. We found ways to take action. I have also brought together community groups to start the Community Cafe, which now operates every single Saturday, providing food to those in need. And I have helped start a group that is directly trying to provide community support to Bennington Elementary Schools. All three of those groups I either started or helped take the initiative in bringing together as a citizen. And now I want to take that energy and take that ability to connect people and take that ability to listen and bring it to the select board.
Thank you. Asher?
Hello, everybody. I want to thank Cat TV, the Bennington Banner, and the Bennington Firehouse, as well as all of you who braved the cold to be here, excuse me. And I also want to thank my colleagues here tonight. My name's Asher Edelson. I'm a history teacher locally, town chair of the Bennington Democrats, and I'm happy to serve all of you as a Southwest Tech School Board member. I moved to Bennington near four years ago. I never really felt at home where I lived before. I found my home here, though. I loved everything about this town. I loved the seasons. I loved the mountains. I love the small-town vibes. But really, every part of the world has flaws. And the way I see it, Bennington just has flaws that need to be addressed right now. Issues surrounding transportation, issues surrounding housing. There are problems with racism in our community that need to be addressed as well. I'm going to utilize my experience in politics, my experience on the Southwest Tech School Board, and my experience in the classroom to be the best select board member that I can be on behalf of the people. And I am just excited to have a conversation with all of you tonight. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start asking some questions. And poor Asher is the first. He knows that. You always hate to go first. We're going to talk about a lot of key issues tonight, about specific things that the voters care about. But if you had to name one single issue that you think is the most important facing Bennington, it doesn't have to be huge. It could be a small thing that you just happen to feel is the issue that excites you. What would that issue be?
Put me on the spot with that question. There are a lot of things that I could point to, like sidewalks, Ben High, issues surrounding racism. I would have to say getting around Dylan's Rule would probably be the biggest issue in determining what our town is capable of doing versus what the state would have to do. There are a lot of issues like getting the train to hook up to our North Bennington Station that our town, while I wish we could do something about it, unfortunately, that is not the reality. We would need the state and perhaps the federal government to come in to make that a reality. I would have to say any issue that the select board can or cannot face would be an issue that we have to be cognizant of. It would be an issue that I would certainly be vocal on. I've been vocal on many issues for many years. That being said, we need to be understanding that the select board cannot do everything that we might think it can. So I'd have to say Dylan's Rule. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, so I think this is such a challenging question, partially because many of the major issues that focus, that face the town are interconnected. I think where I put my emphasis is on public safety. That is where I see many, many, many interconnections because so much can flow from having a town where all of the citizens feel safe. And there are so many different ways that safety can be addressed. So again, I, as a citizen, have tried to be as involved as possible up to this point in understanding where the town is, both listening to people, talking to people, and attending select board meetings. And to date, I have gone to every single meeting of CPAR, the new Community Policing Advisory and Review Board that the select board has given a charge to. And I've been doing that because I want to know what is happening around public safety. And I want to know what's happening because I feel like there are many different ways to address questions of public safety. And by being there and hearing how the police chief is thinking about his job, by hearing how citizens are thinking about the ways that they feel safe or unsafe in the town, that has helped me really understand where potential action could be taken. I think it's also really important to be thinking about ways to holistically address safety, to not address safety issues when they become crises, but to address them ahead of time, to take real action on many of the other issues that could be easily the direct focus. Housing, poverty and inequality, the kinds of underlying situations that put people at risk and that cause more crime. Because a safe town is a connected town. And a connected and safe town is the kind of place that people want to start businesses, that tourists want to come to, and that everyone enjoys living in.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yes, thanks. So I think one of the major issues that you should address is housing and homelessness. When I first moved here, it was pretty near impossible to find housing. And we were very fortunate to have enough money to find housing here. Still, it was very, very possible. So I think the select board is making headway with that by approving projects. But still, it's very hard to do that. There's a couple of projects in the way, which we're very pleased with. But I think there's still headway to be made. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Donald?
A lack of leadership. That's where we're starting. You know, if you're going to address a problem, you should address it. And, you know, at Bennington, we hear a lot of things, but unfortunately, people won't go to the polls. You know, one of the things that I've noticed is anytime I'm knocking door to door trying to get support for my seat on the select board, a lot of people say to me, "Don, I'm not going to vote." And I say, "Well, why not?" You know, and they say, "Well, it's not... They just do what they want." You know, it sounds like my ex-wife, you know? She just did what she wanted. But, you know, you got to love it. You know, I love that kind of straight talk with people because then I feel engaged and I feel like I'm learning and I'm becoming more knowledgeable. But I'm a firm believer, if you have good leadership, you might have a shot. You know, lack of leadership is... Listen, you know, we talk about... There's three words in this town that really grab me by the gluteus maximus. One is diversity. The other one is inclusion. Now, those two words, if you look at diversity, what's diversity mean? You know, as a man of color, I live in Bennington. Bennington is 1.8, 1.9% black. Maybe Hispanic, indigenous people, Native Americans, Mexicans, who knows? But sometimes when I speak to people, they don't understand my life experience. And I, of course, couldn't say that I would... I've lived in their shoes, so I don't know their life experience, you know? But I'm willing to engage. I'm willing to talk to people. I'm willing to learn. You know, and I think, as I said earlier to you, active listening. That's the key. Got to be an active listener.
Nancy?
The biggest problem facing Bennington are the plans for the future of Bennington. There is no plan for Bennington to return to being the leader that we were in Bennington County for generations. We have outside groups like the BCRC and the BCIC who have far too much say in our town. They're basically pushing an agenda for the state. What the state wants isn't necessarily best for Bennington. For the last six years, you've been paying for plans for a TIF district for Bennington. By now, you should know what that is. You should know where the boundaries are, and you should know the four or five major projects. You don't because your officials haven't had it on an agenda in five years. I've watched the plans for six years. I've watched the plans change, and they get crazier as they go along. There is very little economic development. We have got to start focusing on the private sector. We have got to have somebody in the town office calling around the country, small, light manufacturers. We should be filling Energizer, six, eight, 10, 12 groups like this. We've got to get private sector jobs. You have to be able to work and be able to have a place to live if you're working 40 hours a week. And those jobs have disappeared, and nobody's trying to get them back. So, I mean, you need to be aware of the plans so that you can get involved and change the plans.
Thank you. Ed?
So in a community as diverse as Bennington, obviously, there are a number of issues that need to be juggled by a select board, right? The first priority and the most important priority is connecting residents to information and making sure that residents, citizens, taxpayers understand how decisions are being made, what information is used in making those decisions. That will help to bring a community together. You've heard a number of opinions and positions that are important to people. And I agree with everything that my colleagues have said up here tonight. But the most important thing is the exchange of information. And that brings a community together, right? Community connection. We're addressing a fragmentation right now of our community, which ends up affecting every area. Youth education, we hear a lot about opportunity for youth and challenges in our education system, in our schools. We hear a lot about safety. We hear a lot about crime. We hear a lot about the economy, jobs. I just heard Nancy mention jobs. I couldn't agree more. Housing, healthcare. All those things can be addressed when there is a much more open exchange of information. That'll be my first priority.
Thank you. Next question, we're going to start with Jack. We'll go right into the budget. It's a $16 million proposal and 8.3% increase. Do you support that level of spending? And if so, why is it needed? And if not, where would you suggest the select board look for cuts?
So the easy questions. Look, I mean, the town budget, and I know because I actually attended and then watched the full town budget meetings, a lot of the reason that the budget is going up as much as it is is because of inflation. It has hit very hard in the Bennington community as it has hit communities across the country. And some of the most drastic increases as a result of inflation have been to areas that are sorely, sorely needed, like the maintenance of roadways and other endeavors that require physical goods that because of the pandemic and because of inflation, the costs have gone up, and the amount of time it takes for those actual physical objects to reach Bennington has increased a great deal. So yes, it is a noticeable increase. But I think, having paid attention to the budget hearings, I can understand why it has increased. As for where there should be direct cuts, I think that the select board has actually taken a lot of pretty drastic measures to ensure that the budget didn't go up a lot more than it did. I understand that it is hard for it to go up so much, but they have made a lot of efforts to make cuts. And if you go and you watch the meetings where the budget was discussed, you will see town departments advocating for more money than what they were actually awarded and almost to a person, talking about how for the coming year they were going to be making do with very, very little and doing as much as they could with very little. So in terms of my answer to that question, I don't have a direct place I would look for cuts. I would want to make sure that all of the money is being spent as responsibly as possible and hope that we don't have to deal with another year like this last one in terms of inflation.
Thank you, Jack. Sarah?
Yeah, thank you. So that's a... It's a difficult question. But I think, you know, having small business, it's a really hard year. My business, we buy sugar. We, you know, we're seeing high costs in sugar. We're all seeing high costs in eggs. We're all seeing high costs in everything. It's really tough. So seeing these costs pass on to us, it's kind of easy, you know? Being currently on, seeing on select board, it was really hard to make any cuts. So yeah, I do have to... We did have to make some cuts, but we did have to send that on. I did support that to send that on to the voters, so yes. And I think that, just saying a little bit more, I'm looking to see if I may be cut. But yes, I think cutting any paving really would have been a detriment to our town. So doing any more cuts would have been really hard to do.
Thank you. Donald?
I don't support the budget, you know, and for a lot of reasons. But, you know, 8.6%... See, here goes the thing. Next year, we already know the budget's going to go up. My friend, he was talking about inflation. Well, you know, inflation's not going anywhere. We can dream about it, but it's not going anywhere. You know, it'll be here next year, and it'll be here a year after. And we'll be saying the same thing, okay? So, you know, you got to ask yourself, well, what... You know, where do you cut in a budget? You know, people, when you start taking kipels and bits from this corner and stealing something from that corner to make ends meet, people don't want that. Don't, you know, don't take my money. You know, I've got a program to run. So I would... If I did anything, I would sit at the round table and discuss this out with people and hear all different points of view. Because I think once I get a fair shake on what people are thinking, then I can make a better decision about things. You know, the town's in a rough spot. You know, you talk about the police. We're down 12, 14 offices right now. We have not replaced them because they won't replace them, okay? Then we have a major lawsuit. Four months ago, a young white fellow was beat senseless by four police officers. They lied about it. They lied on the police reports, okay? And they were immediately fired by the chief. And I thought it was quick action, you know, which needed to be done, you know? You know, this isn't a Bennington that I know, you know? Ben High. Another project you should keep your eyes on. A lot of moving parts going on with that, but keep your eyes on it.
I'm sure we'll talk about that tonight. Nancy?
8.4% cut in the budget or 8.4% increase, 8.6% increase. You better believe I'd cut that budget. Every year, it's the same thing in Bennington around the country. Town officials put together the budget. They make the cuts. They give it to the select board. It's the job of the select board to cut spending. This is the 14-page line-by-line printout. I've gone over it. I went to the budget meetings. There are cuts that must and can be made. Some are difficult, but that's what you do when you're in a recession. Our select board used to always cut budgets. I can't remember the last time we defeated a budget in Bennington, and that's what you do to give your select board a wake-up call. The select board kept all the raises in for town officials. I don't question that people work hard, but there are employers in Bennington doing no raises for their employees. What else was I looking at in here? New, brand-new position for the town office, another $83,000 position. We're a low-income town of 15,000 people. We cannot continue adding all these new positions. If you need this technologies position that much, you got to cut someplace else. else. You can go line through line here. $10,000 there, $50,000 there. It adds up. There's no way anybody can justify passing this budget. Thank you.
Ed?
Well, in my full-time job, I am in leadership at a national media company. We know that the cost to deliver news and information has increased exponentially through a pandemic. In my side gig, many of you know that my wife and I own a small motel here in Bennington. My wife quoted me a statistic today that shocked me. In order to keep up with inflation, the average national rate for a hotel room has gone up by 64% year over year. That's just to keep up with inflation. Unbelievable. So, do I agree with an increase in spending? Absolutely not. Do I have some understanding of how it may have happened? Yes, I do. Let me correct one of my colleagues here. We're actually down seven police officers in our, in our police department right now at full force. We have 28, we have 21 now. Our police department is recruiting heavily. We have one new recruit in training. This recruit came to us qualified from out of state. And because of Vermont regulations, it will take until July 1st for that recruit to be on the street. So, we are recruiting heavily. We understand the open positions and the safety issues that are there. Do I support it? No. Do I understand how it could have happened? Yes. I think that to Nancy's point, line by line, it's necessary to make sure that we understand. Can money be shifted? Technology is important. We're adding a position in technology because that's the future, right? Is there some way that other things can be reduced to account for that?
Thank you. Asher?
The budget is big. There's no doubt about that. I empathize with my colleagues who have concerns about how big the budget is and how it has increased. I also feel for the parts of our town that would suffer if certain cuts were to be made. And believe me, things like concrete ain't cheap. We need to repair sidewalks for safety, extend them. We need a lot of things in this town. We're not going to get them all overnight. Do I support the budget now? I suppose I do. I'd be open to cuts, potentially on certain salaries, like $83,000 for a new town official seems a little high. You could subtract $20,000 off of that and that'd still be more than I make as a teacher. And you could say that for a lot of other town positions. I think, looking at economic growth is going to be important for expanding our budget and strengthening our town's economy as a whole. It's fantastic that we have a string of businesses from the Gamer Grotto to Madison's, Juniper Lane, all these places opening up and staying proactive is a good thing for our town. It's really tough when you talk about cutting the budget. It's really tough. Like I said, I tentatively support the budget now. And regarding cuts, I would look at pretty much what Nancy was saying down there. Certain officials that make more than teachers do. I'm sorry, we do live in a small town and cuts will eventually have to be made. So, that's where I'd support cuts.
Thank you, Asher. Quickly.
I think looking at budget cuts at people's salaries is a little more difficult than one might think. When somebody starts out at a certain pay point, once you start cutting them, you lose people's, at their position. So, I think it's a little more gray than people might think, looking at that. You know, somebody starts out at a teacher's salary, say $40,000, and they're there for 10 years. You can't automatically break them down to $30,000. They're going to look towards a job in New York. So, just kind of looking at that that way. It's not as clear, as people might think.
I appreciate that clarification. And I'll just tell our viewers and the people in the audience, there are going to be a lot of things said tonight. And I encourage you, if you're curious about some of the things you hear, if you're questioning some of the things you hear, the select board's happy to talk to you. The town's happy to talk to you. The banner would be happy to talk to you. Look around for some of the facts if you're wondering about some of the things you hear tonight. Sarah, the first question, the next question is for you. And we're going to talk about Ben High. And do you support the project? And sort of more broadly than that, what do you see the role, the public-private partnership for development downtown? What is the role of the private developer and what is the proper role for taxpayers in your mind?
Sure. So, currently, Ben High is in its development stage. So, it's more exploratory, seeing if grant funding can be secured. It's private part, private, public, private development. So, the towns partnership would have a role as an agent securing those grants. So, right now, I support that as long as all the grant funding is in place. So, I, yes, I currently do support that as long as all the funding is in place and taxpayers will not be on the hook for that. Yes.
Donald?
I don't support it. Although, I agree with Sarah about one thing, you know. The Ben High project is a very, very extensive, you'd almost have to be a rocket scientist to follow it. There's just so many moving parts to it. There really is. And don't, don't believe me. Go and Google it. Go look it up, okay? Now, the funding sources, if they're in place, I'm in agreement with it. But I'm going to watch it like a hawk. Because I can tell you, you know, we had the salt scrub incident here in this town where the taxpayers... See, my problem is, is this. I don't want the taxpayers to be on the hook for the mistakes that the town makes. That's my problem, okay? And they shouldn't be on the hook. And we've been on the hook several times with situations in this town where they didn't pay attention and they went and they made certain moves. And then they said, well, the taxpayers will take care of it. Well, nice. So nice to your residents of Bennington, you know. No. I'm not, so I'm not for, I'm not for the project. I mean, I agree with Sarah. I would, I would be okay with it moving forward, but I would want somebody to keep their eyes on. Like, I think every two weeks, we should have a biweekly report on, you know, instead of like, we haven't had a report on Ben High since, what, two months? I don't remember the last one.
Thank you. Nancy?
Last year, the Bennington Select Board did to their own citizens what no other select board in the state would have done. They've had town officials working on a secret deal for the private property since 2020, refused to answer any questions until the budget passed last year. At that first meeting, absolutely no one went over the details of this contract they should have. This is a legally binding contract. Without voter approval, the Bennington Select Board is planning on forcing the local taxpayers to pay millions to buy and subsidize the Ben High for the next 30 years until 2052, again, without voter approval. So, when you, when you're hearing it's a public-private project, the public, the citizens, we were taken to the cleaners. I would urge you to go to the town website and look at this agreement. You couldn't find it last year from March until October. When somebody pointed it out to me in the end of March, I came to hear it to a meeting in April. I asked this to be put on an agenda. I asked it to be go over line by line to explain it to the public. As usual, the select board refused. Lots of things I should go over, but the one thing you need to understand, under state law, it says in here, the public should have been told, we have 30 days to sign a petition if we were against the project. If enough people signed the petition, it would have been placed on a ballot. If the voters said no, that would have been end of the Ben High. This is what it says. Nobody told the public at that meeting in March. But a few days later, little notices popped up in the banner. So, unless you read the banner, unless you read the classified notices, you didn't know what your rights were. Our time to sign the petition came and went. Now, even today, officials can't tell us what it's going to cost the taxpayers, but they've already put us on the hook. You have to defeat the budget to force them to tear this up. And John Hale is not buying the Ben High. He's not paying for 70%. The taxpayers of Bennington will be paying.
Ed?
Thank you. First of all, let me put on record that I am in favor of the development of the Ben High project. And I agree with Sarah that if a public-private partnership works the way it's supposed to, it's a win-win. And the way that it is supposed to work, by the way, because we have resources and talent in a municipality like Bennington, we can source for funding. That's our job. So, we have a buyer and we have talent matched up with that buyer to secure funding to make sure that that project is not the burden of the taxpayers. That's a win. If the project is developed through, through the sources of funding that I just mentioned, state grants, federal grants, income tax abatements and those sorts of things, this is all on the Bennington website, by the way. And the project goes through. And then we have this beautiful asset in our community. And the town has the ability now to lease back property. All we've done is invest the time to secure the funding. That wouldn't happen without the public partnership, in my opinion, unless we had a deep-pocket developer, which we've not been able to secure. And how many years has Ben High been empty?
Asher?
I fully appreciate what the Ben High project is aiming to do. Providing a place for seniors, providing a place for potential community events, housing, so on. Look, if we're spending millions of dollars on this project and there are issues like sidewalks that need dire repairs, I don't know that it's the right thing to do right now for the town. I need to see that this project will make Ben High fully accessible for people with disabilities, that it will be financially feasible. And right now, I don't know that it is considering all the things that the town needs to do. If I were to vote today on Ben High as a select board member, I would vote no. That being said, you know, there are things that could come out regarding the Ben High project that might sway my vote the other way. Because, let's face it, housing is a big issue in Bennington. As senior citizens get older, they're probably looking for places that are a little cheaper and a little less high maintenance to move into. So, Ben High would provide a fantastic avenue for that. That being said, I need to see the disability accessibility in the project. Otherwise, I cannot justify voting for it. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, I, part of my answer, I want to echo some of what Ed said and some of what Asher talked about, which is that with this project, there are really big promises being made. And that's part of why the bill is so high. There are mechanisms being put in place so that that bill will not be passed on to the taxpayers. But where I would really want to focus my accountability, similar to what Asher was talking about, is making sure that it lives up to a lot of the promises of what we are paying for by redeveloping Ben High. There is the baseline that it will redevelop a major structure on Main Street. That is a huge potential benefit for the town. What will go in that building remains to be seen. And that is where I think it makes sense for there to be a lot of attention and good questions, like, how accessible will it be? There have been big promises around adding affordable housing there, making sure that that doesn't fall away at any point during the process. Making sure that if it is affordable housing, it's affordable housing that will be attractive to everyone, that this is a project that benefits everyone in the town. And I think it is very early on in the development stage of this project to say definitively whether it is something you can or cannot support. I fully support continuing to explore how a redeveloped Ben High can benefit all of the citizens of Bennington. I think that there is massive, massive potential there. We have to be careful that it then doesn't become an economic burden on the town, which would not benefit the citizens of Bennington. And we have to make sure that the promises made about what entities will be in Ben High, we have to make sure that those groups are all actually able to access it and then provide from a marquee location on Main Street, the services to the town that they're meant to provide. With all of that in place, similar to what Asher was saying, I'd be fully in support. And for now, I'm in support of continuing to understand how it can best benefit the town.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Donald. Let's just stay on housing for a minute since everybody seems to have touched on it with the last question. What more can the select board be doing to promote affordable housing in Bennington? And how does this town address its homelessness issue?
Well, for your first question, I would just say, we, you know, we have affordable housing. We had Section 8 housing. And then we have homelessness. But when you talk about homelessness, you can't leave out mental health. And you can't leave out addiction because they, they fit hand in hand. You know, I sit at these meetings sometimes and I listen to people talk. And they make things sound rosy. And they said, you know, listen, everything is about, you know, when we sit here and we, we listen to you guys in the community, you know, everything is about money. Let's, let's just get down to it. Everything's about money, okay? We don't have money, we can't fix stuff. Or at least we're told that. Some people, you know, like the Ben High project, not to go back to it. But I'm going to tell you something. I didn't support it. I don't like it. I think it's going to, it's going to be a, well, you'll see. And then you'll say, hey, you know that, that guy Don, he was right. I'm telling you, you do, wait till it goes down. You'll be shocked. But here goes the thing. Housing, we need housing here. You know what the problem here is? Rent controls. Two months ago, I paid $7.50 a month for rent. Then a guy, he came in, he bought the place. I wasn't mad at him. But he raised my rent $150. $100... Nah, my name is Donald, but it ain't Trump, okay? So, I don't have $150 next year. So, I went to the guy and I said to him, I said, listen, I said, I'll give you $7.50. So, he didn't say anything. So, I left. And the next month, rent, I gave him $7.50. He took it. You know. But I mean, I'm seconds from being homeless, you know. It's just, anything can happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Nancy?
Sure. Bennington is 10 years overdue for an honest discussion about housing using actual statistics and facts and figures. Monopolies aren't a good thing. They drive out the competition and drive up the price. The large housing groups in Bennington, we need to know what percentage of the market they control. And I meant to look, I've got the minutes at home. I think it was about 15, 18 years ago. Whoever was running Shire's at the time when it was called RAC, said at a select board meeting that Shire's controlled less than 10% of the housing in Bennington. Now, that long ago, citizens and some people on the select board were concerned they were getting too much housing. If they controlled 10%, 15 or 18 years ago, we need to know what percentage of the housing they control in Bennington. And when you talk about affordable housing, think of the homeowners. Many of us who own homes in this town today, we're not going to be able to afford to live here in the next seven or eight years. I'm concerned about how many apartments we're pushing for where people only pay 30% of their rent. Well, if they're only paying 30% of their income or benefits, what about the homeowners? We have no limits. We have over 20% that can't help, can't afford to pay anything. So, those of us who are paying, we're paying our share and for the others who can't pay. So, there's a lot of different things you have to look at. And again, we should have started these discussions 10 years ago. And it has to be the people of Bennington. I don't want these outside groups pushing their agenda for the state of Vermont. Did I have any time left? Okay, just to go back to the Ben High. Seniors had no say. Seniors were kept in the dark. The only reason seniors are kept, being kicked out of their building is seniors are needed at the Ben High for tax credits and grants. Everybody knows parking is going to be a nightmare. I've asked about parking for two years and officials don't want to talk about it. It took them two years to say they want to put a parking lot next to the old Stewart's in front of the cemetery. It's a ridiculous project.
Thank you, Nancy. Ed?
Well, let me start by saying that affordable housing is a problem everywhere, not just here, right? We're talking about here. But one of the things that we ought to do is pay attention to what's happening elsewhere, because we might be able to gain some insight. And to that end, I think that the select board has 100% responsibility in understanding the impact of a lack of affordable housing. And affordable is subject to interpretation, right? I moved here almost 20 years ago, average guy. My job was to run the Bennington banner at the time. There wasn't anything affordable or not to live in when I first moved here. That, that has only gotten worse, by the way. Lack of community connection, right? Increase the tax base, lower the cost of living, including the cost of housing. That's how that all works. The number one economic driver or downturn is housing. If we can't recruit people to come here, work here, spend money here, we won't be able to lower the cost of housing by increasing the tax base. So, the question was, what is the select board's responsibility or role in it? And it's 100%. Act as liaison. I'm very interested in seeing that happen.
Thank you. Quickly.
How do you propose that we do all of what you just said? How do you propose that we do all of what you just said?
Ask a question, I'll be glad to answer it. I'm not sure what I understand your question.
Well, you said a litany of things there, and I'm sitting here, and I'm saying, you know, you know, I listen to words, and I feel like it's semantical, and I feel like I'm, you know, what did he say? You know?
Donald, I'm actually going to cut you off, so we can keep moving on here. Asher?
I feel like the Bennington Select Board has responsibility to really vet people when it appoints members to, you know, any housing or zoning committee, people who are going to really be interested in pushing for affordable housing, pushing for things that will help people who experience homelessness. It's great that we have a homeless shelter on Main Street, although we need one somewhere else in town, at least another one. I feel like the select board should be more proactive in getting habitats for humanity to visit our town, getting tiny homes built up, or something to that effect, utilizing space that is not being used, that the town could potentially get for a relatively good price to utilize for either affordable housing or housing for people who experience homelessness. It's a real issue when you have, you know, below zero freezing temperatures, and there's human beings out there on the streets who can't make it down to Main Street. It's also an issue for people who are already in their homes. I, as a homeowner, do not plan on raising the rent for my tenants. That being said, I do believe that, I believe it was Donald who mentioned rent control could be an option for places like South Shire and Community Resource Management, places that aren't single-home families, you know, just me owning the home. We need to really think about rent control, and I do also want to see the select board really pay attention to who it appoints to the housing boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Asher. Jack?
So, I want to be, and I think we all need to be really clear about what we're talking about when we're talking about people who are unhoused in Bennington, because, just because those folks do not happen to have housing does not make them any less members of this community. They are here in this town. And the select board has a duty to them, just as it does to all of the other citizens in Bennington. There are people who are unhoused who vote. There are people who are unhoused, and just because they do not have a home does not mean they don't have just as many rights as a fellow human being that we all do. And it is important that any actions to help address folks who are unhoused come from that perspective. I, as a citizen, have felt a need to take action to provide support to folks who are unhoused in this community, because I think many of us know, tragically, there was someone who died in this town because they were not able to take advantage of shelter. The finger points not only at the select board, but back at all of us as citizens. Whether I'm elected or not, this is something that I want to work to address. Now, in addition to providing support to folks who are unhoused, there need to be more affordable housing options, and we also need to be preparing for the fact that some of the most significant rental supports that are currently in place, VRAP, the statewide rental assistance that has been paying, in many cases, 100% of people's rents, is going to be going away in June. There are many people who are about to be in very precarious housing situations, and we need to start working proactively to make sure that they do not end up unhoused. There are people who work full-time jobs, who are about to be put in a dire situation, and we need to be there for them.
Thank you. Sarah?
Sure. So I think there's a couple different buckets here. There's homelessness, and then there's lack of housing. So homelessness, I think, is a very complicated issue. That comes with a component, for me, with significant mental health issues as well. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed. The select board can address that by helping different homeless coalition, being supportive to them, and helping them with their issues, as well as creating new housing, supporting the Ben High project, which I just mentioned, I was a supporter of, as long as everything's in place with that, and then other projects that are coming up along the way with housing. So that's how I conceive that, helping.
Thank you. Nancy, you get the next question to start with, and then we'll switch to audience questions. But the decisions you make today on the select board are going to impact this town for generations. So I'm looking almost for something philosophical, but maybe you want to be more specific than that. But when you look ahead 10 years in your mind, what should Bennington look like? What changes and improvements would you like to see? Or perhaps your answer is no significant changes. You love the town, and part of the job is to stop change. How would you respond to that?
Where would I like to see Bennington in 10 years? I would like to see us moving towards being the leader again. I'm tired of hearing what we have to do for Bennington County and the Berkshires. I want us to be a desirable town again. I think a lot of the issues that have grown and grown, I think a lot of the groups that are supposed to be addressing those issues aren't held accountable. But people are going to have to be able to afford to live here. And a lot of the issues we're facing were caused by the state. For the last 40 years, the state of Vermont has outpriced us on the job market, they've outpriced us in the housing market, and now the state wants all the towns to settle the But again, it has to be the public coming together to make the decisions. You can't continue to have all these groups with their secret plans for the future of Bennington, because their plans are awful. And unless you start getting people on the select board that want to keep you informed and listen and put the citizens first, I don't see Bennington as having much of a future.
Ed?
I love Bennington, and I think that the character of Bennington ought to be maintained. Where do I see us in 10 years? I'd love to see us with a thriving commercial district. I'd love to see us with a thriving downtown. That takes infrastructure, it takes housing, it takes jobs, it takes recruiting people to come here to live and to work. It means improving our image, it means addressing the challenges in our educational system, in our schools, increasing the tax base. I think that that's the role of the select board over the next 10 years.
Asher?
I love Bennington. I wouldn't be paying a mortgage until the 2050s if I didn't. We need a town that's walkable, a town that's walkable in all parts, a town that is going to be inclusive and welcoming to people of color, people with disabilities, people from all walks of life. Now, how do we get there? We listen. We don't look you in the eye and smile and say, hi, nice to meet you, while thinking, oh, I'm going to screw that guy over. No. You have to be honest, you have to be candid. I'm here tonight to tell you that while this town does have a lot of great qualities, and that's why I love it so much, we do have a lot of things to work on. According to the town's disability plan, I do not have a disability, because it only mentions physical and mental disabilities. That's one small area the town could work on, so that neurological and developmental disabilities are mentioned in the town's disability plan. So a town that is inclusive, walkable, and also a town that is generally welcoming, a town that has bus drivers that don't have to unionize in order to get paychecks that allow them to meet ends meet, a town that really thrives, and yes, I want to agree, a town with a thriving commercial district would be fantastic. My gosh, we're already on the way there. We already have so many wonderful businesses, we just need to welcome them and really work on building up our town. Additionally, in 10 years, I don't think a mayor would be a bad idea.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, so I love this question, because it invites us to imagine something, and it's not necessarily the town we'll have in 10 years, but it's the town we want in 10 years. And that is an invitation to think big about just how good things could be if we're all willing to put in the work. And that's where it has to match up. There has to be a big vision and a lot of work in the meantime. So when I close my eyes and think about what I would really like Bennington to look like in 10 years, I want everyone to be making a living wage, I want everyone to have housing or an option of housing, where it is unthinkable that someone would spend the night on the street, where everyone has access to high-quality healthcare, where everyone has access to the entire town through sidewalks, where everyone has access to the supports they need, because a comprehensive vision of what would count as a disability is included in the town mission. And we actually do have a town vision statement that invites us to think on this level. The select board has put that in place. It is up to us to take action and build the systems in this town that ensure that kind of opportunity for every single citizen. By doing that, that makes this town a place that businesses want to start in. And as Asher said, we're already seeing that. There are many vibrant businesses here in town already. We also have incredible natural beauty all around us, increasing equity of access to that, and making sure that we maintain the beautiful environment that we all enjoy every single day. That's the kind of thing that we can work on for the next 10 years, so that we actually have the town that we imagine. It's up to us, and that's part of why I really want to run for select board.
Sarah?
Sure. So this question is something, when I think about, when I want to travel, my business is a traveling business, we go around to different places to sell our items. So when I think of a place to go to sell our items, I think of places that are nice, beautiful places, that I want to stay at for a couple days. So this is the kind of thing that I'm imagining our Bennington to be like. So I think of someplace that has a great place to recreate, we already have that. Someplace that is welcoming, we already have that, too. Also, you know, someplace where it's great to do business, we could prove upon that. So in someplace that's very welcoming, we're getting there, we're getting there. And someplace that businesses could thrive, we're also getting there. So, you know, all of those things are things we're striving at, we're getting there. But, so those are some things that, you know, I'm thinking, but I'm thinking more along business-wise, but also, if a business wants to move in, we need to approve upon housing. So it's like all time multifaceted for me, thinking along the business lines of my business. It's kind of things I've been thinking along for quite a while. So these are some of the answers that I've been thinking about.
Chris, thank you. Donald?
What was the question again?
Sorry.
Look ahead 10 years.
10 years. Say no more. I don't look at 10 years in Bennington, you know, I look from day to day in Bennington. You know, I've been here for 10 years, and, you know, I don't mean to sound pessimistic, but, you know, I don't see a lot of change, you know? And I'm a pretty good visionary, you know? We use words like vision, you know? What is the vision of Bennington? You know, when I come to the town hall meetings, you know, they have a vision statement, and I listen to it, and then I try to envision it, but I don't see it, you know? Now, you know, it's not because I'm blind, I just don't, I can't follow, you know? And it's been very difficult for me as a resident here, you know, and I want to slot myself for not jumping into the political arena in this town nine years ago, because, listen, we need, and I hollered it earlier to you, change. You know, I'm not waiting 10 years for some park to get put in Bennington. You know, we got parks, we got a whole bunch of stuff, okay? But what we don't have is, we don't have change in leadership here. And we keep getting the same thing over and over and over and over again. And, you know, those same people that give you the over and over again, and the same people that smile on your face, vote for me, you know? I'll do nothing. What goes on? I'm just telling you the truth. You know, some people say, you don't gotta, you shouldn't talk like that. Tell the truth, it'll set you free, okay? You don't have to vote for me. Don't have to vote. Just be an active listener.
Thank you, Donald. This is a question from the audience, and it's, we'll start with you, Ed. What do you think the ARPA fund should be spent on? And ARPA funds are federal funds that have come into the town. The select board has mapped out the way they think that the ARPA funds should be spent. How do you think the ARPA fund should be spent? And federal funds in general, how would you treat federal funds for the town?
Well, some of the things that we talked about tonight that Bennington is in need of or is lacking, it would make sense to use ARPA funds to address some of those things. Homelessness, as an example, is something that I bet our taxpayers might feel uncomfortable being on the hook for. But if we had the ability to use ARPA funds to address that, that's an emergency, right? Good use of that money. Things that are discretionary are things that ARPA funds could be used for fairly easily, and with, I think, with voter support. So I think that you look at your list of priorities, you understand what could, what's emergency, what is a challenge for taxpayers to be on the hook for. By the way, ARPA funds come with all sorts of restrictions and regulations, right? So interpretation is important, keeping them neat and clean is important, the reporting of it, the record-keeping of it is important. But I think that you look at the priorities, and you understand what it would be like to leave taxpayers off the hook, and perhaps solve some of the biggest emergency problems that are on the priority list.
Thank you. Asher?
First of all, I want to say, that is an excellent question, and I thank whoever submitted it. It's actually been on my mind lately, as I've formed an interest in repairing and expanding sidewalks throughout Bennington. For the safety of people who are on wheelchairs, or folks who are blind, any person with a disability is going to care about sidewalks. If the sidewalk is damaged and in need of repair, that can make it difficult for someone with a disability to utilize it, for God's sake. I would, I would look at sidewalk repair and expansion. I would look at housing projects to potentially house those who experience homelessness, whether that looks like tiny homes or purchasing existing properties. I also wonder how much our town spends and other authorities spend on people who experience homelessness when they're out of the home versus in a home. Additionally, I would love to see ARPA funds used to assist Green Mountain Express in ensuring that not only are the drivers paid well, but that services are readily available and more accessible to the people of Bennington, whether you live on Main Street or on the outskirts of town. These are important issues, especially for folks who need to get to their doctor's appointments or work, what have you. Transit matters. It doesn't matter if that's a sidewalk or the local bus, you know, those are the two that come to mind when it comes to things of the town, might have a say in. So if we had a clean slate, or if we do have the opportunity to reutilize ARPA funds, I would say transit.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. I would echo some of what Ed was saying and some of what Asher was saying, because we do live in a town where access to transportation is crucial, and it plays a large role in many people's ability to access their employment. And so being able to expand access to transportation would directly address a really crucial need. And I think ARPA funds would also be well-used, expanding services available for people who are unhoused, whether that's warming centers, or, as Asher was saying, tiny houses, or repurposing existing properties. I think there are also some projects that the select board is considering that, on their face, may look simply like recreation, but actually do address these underlying needs. There is a proposal put in for a skate park, and I was interested to see that, and I actually ended up in a conversation with some people a couple months ago about this. And there were four of us, and we ranged in age from mid-60s to, there were a couple of us who are in our early 30s. And to a person, every single one of us knew at least one person who would say, my life was saved because of my involvement with the skate park and the community that existed around it, because it provided an avenue towards intergenerational mentorship, it provided them a Because it provided an avenue towards intergenerational mentorship, it provided them a place to go outside of the home, when there were difficulties in the home of all different kinds. And so, I think finding projects that not only, on their face, look like they directly address, but taking a really holistic view of how projects can foster economic benefit, and provide avenues for people to make community connections. Because community connections enhance safety, enhance opportunity, and enhance the town.
Thank you. Sarah?
So, yeah, the ARPA funds do have some stipulations, as I'd mentioned, and there was a survey put out to the entire town, and top survey was housing. So, right now, programs are in place for housing, or, sorry, the program is in place for housing, so some projects are underway with ARPA funds. And at the top of the list, there also is a skate park, so that is also one of the top hopes of mine, is a skate park. And that is correct, so yes, that does have an economic opportunity to it, as well as, I heard some of the things that you asked, so I'm gonna echo exactly what you said, it has saved a lot of people, and it does provide that. So, yes, skate park and the housing projects that are in works are two of the top. And I really wanted to hear from the input from the community, and not just have my voice heard, because the survey, I think, was very important, to hear everybody's input from the community, with all that money coming from the ARPA funds.
Donald?
ARPA funding. I would say that I'm for it, but with stipulations. You know, I think that things need to be, again, I'm a guy, I'm a slow learner, so I have to hear lots of information before I make a decision about something. But, you know, funding is good, and provided that the funding is used for a specific, like, this ARPA funding, I'm not sure if the money is, I know, I've heard Sarah say, that some money is specifically designed to go to certain places. Now, you know, sometimes when we get grants, especially federal, state, there's something called a supplanting of funds, funds being misused and not directed to where they're supposed to go to. And a lot of times, we don't hear about that until somebody got their hand caught in a cookie jar, you know? But that goes on quite frequently. I mean, you know, there's projects here, right in this town, in Bennington. You know, I, sometimes when I'm at the Select Board meetings, and I sit and I listen to some of, here goes the thing about the Select Board, I love them to death, but they don't always tell the truth. The town manages. You know? I ask my question today, two days from now, it'll be a different answer, okay? And I'm just calling it the way I see it. And it's, like I said earlier, and I'm gonna keep announcing it tonight, it's time for change. Wake up, folks, okay? Stop being, you know, placated, for lack of a better word. Thank you.
Nancy?
One of the big uses for ARPA money is water and sewer, because that's critical for any town and city. And across Vermont and the country, many places are taking a big chunk, if not all of the ARPA money, and using it for water and sewer. Over a year ago, town officials gave the Select Board a long, detailed list of multiple water and sewer projects that must be done in Bennington. Price tag starts at over twenty-five million dollars. Because of that, I went before the Select Board in January, and asked them to spend two of our four million in ARPA towards some of these projects. As usual, they refused. They should have had multiple discussions, about which one of these projects we need to do first, because several of them sounded like they were on their last legs a year ago. You watched last year, County in Benmont was an emergency, we had to do it. Cost us at least nine-hundred thousand dollars, we are not getting anything back from the state. So, we're still looking at twenty-five million of water and sewer, we in Bennington are gonna have to pay. But unless you defeat the water and sewer bond, the five-point-eight million on the ballot, and unless you defeat the budget, officials want to spend the nearly three million we have left on the Ben High and a skateboard park. Now, water and sewer users are paying two bonds right now, over thirteen million dollars. Each bond has ten years left. So, you gotta look at the basics. Twenty-five million dollars, you need to put every bit of that three million towards the twenty-five, because we still have a ton of money we're gonna have to pay. Skateboard park. When people had the list to look at a year ago online to choose from, nobody asked about an outdoor pool at the rec center. We've had no place for people to swim since the Y closed when I was a kid, other than the Branch River. Nobody suggested the gym at the rec center. Bennington residents have waited over thirty years for it. Skateboard park, one discussion last March, has been top-secret then, and the reason it's secret, you're not gonna be happy with the design, the cost, or the partnership. Another reason to defeat the budget. Force them to give us answers, before you give them our money.
We're gonna start with Asher, with this round. Again, this comes from a member of the audience. Exactly what do you do to ensure that drug and gun offenders face federal prosecution, rather than state prosecution, and push for longer sentences? And let's make it a little broader than that, we, you know, I think clearly the Select Board hears about drug issues, crime, violent crime, and gangs. What are you thinking about, how to move forward on that issue?
Wow, that's a, I asked hard-bolt questions, and now I'm getting them. Thank you for whoever asked that question, by the way, and regarding pushing for state and federal prosecutions, that wouldn't really, as far as I know, it wouldn't be up to the Select Board, although Select Board members could certainly state that they support that, and make a fuss out of it, and, you know, urge state and federal officials to make the right decision when need be. When it comes to it being a town issue, you know, that's the million-dollar question. That towns across America are trying to figure out, how do we beat the opioid epidemic? How do we beat, you know, how do we beat crime, all that? I think we gotta look to other parts of the world, that have addressed this issue in a newer way. I personally like the idea of ending the war on drugs, although that would not be up to the Bennington Select Board. That would be up to the state of Vermont, and the folks over in DC to do that. So, I don't know how much I could do about that here. What I could do is advocate for common goods that make it easier for folks to live, things like the skate park, things like affordable and quality transit and housing, things that will improve the lives of ordinary folks, to where eventually, and this is not an overnight fix, probably take a number of years, the community will heal, the community will recover. And there's no such thing as perfection, but we can aim for it, we can mitigate, and we can definitely hold folks up top accountable. Thank you.
A quick follow-up, just for, while we're on the topic. Do you support a hub? A hub is a comprehensive drug treatment facility. Do you support a hub coming to downtown Bennington?
I haven't really thought about it, although on the face, I would. You know, there was a candidate who ran for governor, her name was Brenda Siegel, who talked about a lot of ways that we can challenge the opioid epidemic, and, you know, crime permeates around it, of course.
Thank you.
I would support a hub, yes.
Thank you. And if the other candidates could sort of answer that question, too, as part of their answer. Jack?
Yeah. Yes, I would support a hub, and I'll tell you why. Part of why I have talked about my most important issue being public safety is because we have to take a really clear and holistic view of what it means to have public safety. And at Select Board meetings, and in conversation at CPAR meetings, I have heard the police chief himself say, "We will not arrest ourselves out of the opioid epidemic." Even, he does not see that as the way forward. The way forward is making sure that folks who are using have access to harm reduction, and then an avenue out of the darkness, because that is what's happening for people. And we have some town resources in place, but I think a hub would be an invaluable resource to helping people escape substance abuse disorder. And I also think that having more different avenues in the town for people will benefit them. And, you know, we alluded to the skate park, some of the people who we talked to, and it doesn't have to be a skate park, it could be any number of places. We have the new bike hub in town, which fosters these kinds of intergenerational connections. When people, you know, we have a lot of kids who are in really difficult situations right now, is recently talking with the executive director of Turning Points, the recovery center in town, saying that forty percent of kids who are currently in Bennington schools have one or more parents who are incarcerated, who are dealing with substance abuse issues. Providing those kids places to go, places to find mentorship, and intergenerational connections that are outside of the home, and also finding ways for those parents to have access to a way forward is incredibly important. So, yes, I would support a hub, and I support helping folks who are in really dire need.
Thank you. Sarah?
So, the first part of the question, I, well, Asher got that first. That's a little beyond the life voyage. So, yeah, I think, just to start off with that, we need to support our employees, the work they're doing is especially hard, especially during this time with the opioid crisis. We need to support them all as we can, help them with retention, help them with recruitment, and just really anything that we can do to support them. That's a hub, yes, I support that part, I need to, I believe we need to, support recovery housing, and agencies that are assisting with recovery, and the treatment of the hub, yes, I definitely support that.
Donald?
You know, this is an area that I have a lot of expertise in, and it's a tough area, because you're talking about many different areas here, you know, you're, you know, crime, drugs. One of my things is that there are like four different modalities of treatment that people go through. And, you know, so when people go, one of the things that I advocate for in this town is that we put more money into treatment facilities. You know, we have Sativa, and we have Turning Point, and there's two other drug facilities that are here. I would also advocate for more halfway housing. You know, once people go into a substance abuse facility, and they get treated, whether they're in residential outpatient perinatal addiction prevention, or non-residential day treatment, they're getting treatment. And if they're clean, they need to go to an environment where they can stay clean. One of the major problems is, as Sarah touched on a little bit, is, you know, people get out of treatment from substance abuse, and then they go back to the same neighborhood they came from. And it's a drug-infested neighborhood. So, if I'm a real addict, what do you think I'm gonna do? I'm gonna continue where I left off at. So, there are a lot of ways that, you know, they talk about crime, they talk about the police, I was glad to hear Sarah talk about the police, they really have a tough job. And, you know, fentanyl and heroin is serious business, okay? And unfortunately, we're losing a lot of our young kids, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. I mean, these are babies, they're somebody's kids. And, you know, every day, I look at the Bennington banner, and I see something, and I go, "Oh my God." You know? We just, you know, we can do better.
I didn't hear your first question.
The person's question was, federal penalties are much steeper in drug crimes, and this person would like to know exactly what would you do to ensure that drug and gun offenders receive federal prosecution? And I also was curious about your opinion about the hub coming to downtown Bennington.
Sure. Well, I think Vermonters had better wake up, and I think we all need to start paying attention to the laws that Montpelier has already passed, and wants to push in the future. If you've heard the chief in the past year, he says violent crime is at a level in Bennington over the past year or two, that he hasn't seen from the time when he came here to go to school here. And it's concerning, it almost looks like, at times, the criminals are gonna have more rights with the victims. Not much we can do at the local level, but we really have to pay attention to what they're talking about doing at the state level, and we have to be involved and start keeping track of what our officials are gonna pass at the state level. Of course, I support the hub for healthcare in Bennington. We certainly need the methadone clinic, I think it's gonna be located in the wrong place, in the heart of the downtown, where the old dollar store used to be, down near Paul's Fish Fry. I support a lot of things they want to do in Bennington, but the public should have a say, in where a lot of these things are going to be located. When people found out about the recovery house across from the rec center, it was a done deal, the public had no say. The public should have had a say. This is our neighborhoods, and there are better locations for some of these places to go. So, again, I think you're gonna get a lot more tie-in with the public, if you let the citizens be involved on day one. Another thing I just wanted to throw in, I want people to be aware that there is a group, including some officials, that still are not happy the Pledge of Allegiance is being set at Select Board meetings. I strongly support the pledge. We're a town and state full of veterans, veterans' families, people serving, vets home right here, so on the Select Board, if somebody wants to stop the pledge, I would hope they wouldn't bring it up to me.
Thank you, Nancy. Ed?
So, I'm gonna restate the two-part question, so that we stay on point. Federal prosecution for drug crime was the first part, and then Treatment Hub Downtown was your addition to that. If drug and weapons crimes are happening interstate, it becomes a federal offense, so there ought to be federal prosecution involved. But to Sarah's point, a Bennington Select Board probably has some limitations on its ability to make that happen. It starts earlier than that, it starts in education, it starts in options, it starts in, where are the, where are the drug criminals coming from? We read about this, and we know where they're coming from. One of the things that we ought to do, as a, as a town, is network with the towns where those crimes are originating from, so that we understand the needs of the individuals, or the challenges of the individuals that are committing those crimes in our town. I'll use the example of Springfield, because we hear Springfield, Massachusetts a lot, no offense to Springfield, there's some beautiful areas there. But if crime is originating in Springfield, let us network with crime fighters, drug enforcement in drug treatment in Springfield, so that we understand who might be showing up here. I have thirty seconds to answer the Treatment Hub question. I'm a firm believer in treatment, have family and friends who have needed treatment from time to time, and what community would we be if we didn't have those resources? The question is where it belongs. I echo some of the comments of my colleagues, it comes down to another lack of place in Bennington for these sorts of things. Let's get, let's get more familiar with resources that are available, place these things where they belong. Thank you.
Another audience question, and this is the time we start with Jack. What do you think of the lack of parking in town? And be a little broader than that. Do you think there's a lack of parking, and what's the role of Select Board? How would you solve that problem going forward?
That's incredibly specific. Honestly, I am more concerned about a lack of transportation equity in town, and I think that, yes, there need to be parking opportunities, but I think the greater challenge that many people face is that they can't afford to have a car in the first place.
That's it? Okay. That's an excellent answer.
And as a result of that, there needs to be more transportation options for people, so they can get to work on time reliably, so that they can access economic opportunity, and so that they can be the engines that drive the town.
Thank you. Sarah?
That's a flex answer, like, that's good, that's good. Mine's, this is gonna be, yeah, so, I, I think that having a parking problem in our area is a great problem to have. Once we have this much, this much development in a town, I, I think that solving a parking problem is such an easy problem to fix, so we can fix that. That's my answer.
Donald?
Well, I don't drive in Bennington, I walk all over the place. But I will say this. My friend, he was talking about transportation, and I believe that, you know, okay, there is a lack of par, I know downtown Bennington is a tough area to park in, you know, very tough area. And if, God forbid, there's a concert, or some kind of harvest fest, or whatever, you know, you'd be lucky to, you know, get a spot on the sidewalk. know, you'd be lucky to, you know, get a spot on the sidewalk. But with that being said, I would encourage the Green Mountain Transportation to, you know, up the ante and put more buses on routes, maybe extend times, because, you know, if you notice on Sundays, there's no buses that run in this town, none. You want to catch a bus, you got to go to Albany. Who does that, you know? No bus, not even, say, from 8:00 till 4:00? Zero bus. So, if you're somebody who has to go to a hospital, or you're somebody that's got to go grocery shopping, or you're somebody that's got to meet a friend, it doesn't happen here on Sundays, you know? I'm done.
Nancy?
Vermont is a rural state, we have winter five months of the year, most Vermonters need a car. Unfortunately, we have a group of people in Bennington who've decided parking isn't important. Couple of years ago, I think the Select Board town officials and the planning commission passed a whole packet of changes, and if I'm right, they threw out the parking requirements that have been in our zoning bylaws for over 50 years, or at least most of the requirements. They voted to allow four and five-story buildings, which were never allowed, now you had no say because it happened in a heartbeat. And if I'm right, it means now people can renovate or build these big buildings, and they no longer have to provide enough parking on-site for their tenants and the people working there. Ben-hi, couldn't have talked about it three years ago, it didn't meet the parking requirements, while officials threw them out two years ago. The four-story building going up at Tuttles is only going to have about 42 parking spaces. Using these National Transportation Stanford standards, they should have about 100 spaces. So, our officials are going to tell the people without parking that they should walk down the block to where you want the skateboard parked at the train station and park their cars. We pay for our taxpayer public lots for one reason, so that people who want to shop and eat and attend events in the downtown have a place to park. Well, if I'm correct and officials did this, private landlords are going to get richer because their tenants and employees are going to take over the lots. If I'm right, to me, this is the nail in the coffin for the downtown, most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. But these are the people who passed plans to make Bennington more walkable. So, again, you look at the Putnam Block, 40 parking spaces. I've talked to people who work there who've been told they can't park their cars. So, again, where are people going to put their cars? And growing up, all of our public lots were always had signs, no overnight parking, so that landlords kept their tenants on their property.
Thank you. Ed?
So, point of clarity, the question was regarding lack of parking. There is a lack of curbside parking in Bennington for sure, so if you're looking for a quick stop on Main Street or one of the side streets, it's a challenge, there's no question about it. But if we were a more friendly town, we might point people to where there is parking. So, think about, compare us to some other communities that we've all been to, that we found easier to navigate than ours. We've been to Stowe for weekends, we've, you know, we've driven through Williamstown, other areas that have the same challenges that we do, are much more friendly in their signage, in their direction, that could be done today. So, access to the existing parking that we have is the first thing that we do to solve that problem. I echo some of the things that the other folks up here said about, if we run out of parking, that's a good problem to have, it has to be addressed. We're a tourism town, right? We're the gateway to Vermont from two other states, there's no question that we're going to generate traffic by car. It is the nature of how people mosey through the beautiful state of Vermont. Pointing them to where it's convenient to park is first priority.
Asher?
That's a great question, thank you to whoever asked. You know, given the infrastructure of our town now, it will be difficult to construct further lots and garages, what have you. So, I think about it like this, I go out for a drive, I want to drive somewhere, can't find parking, that's unfortunate, that's annoying. Well, if transit were a little better in town, it would be easier for me to get around without having to rely on my car, whereas I might drive to work, I might drive to the grocery store, parking is fine there. If I want to go to a small business for shopping, and, you know, it's not a good day for walking, well, I got to hope this parks. That being said, I would like to see transit be prioritized over expanding our parking infrastructure. I do agree with Ed that signage would be helpful. I'm just trying to think of other things that I could say right now. I'll definitely think about the parking issue as it regards, you know, visiting different parts of town, especially in parts that are going to be flooded with cars as folks are driving through. Thank you.
Sarah, this question would go to you, and some of you have touched on this already, but the role of recreation in our town, and is there more the town could be doing to promote recreation? Do you support the skate park, trail networks, and is this a taxpayer responsibility?
Yes, I think it's obvious, I do support skate park. We can always do better, yes. Signage, I think signage is one thing, we have pretty good signage right now. Yeah, so, yes, I do support skate park, except, what was the other part of the question?
Is there more the town could be doing to promote recreation and is this a taxpayer responsibility?
As for a taxpayer responsibility, I do see parks as living in a town, that's part of living in a recreated area, so I do see part of that as, yes, I do see part of that as being a taxpayer responsibility, yes.
Donald?
Tough question. I want to say that I agree with what Sarah just said, but, you know, again, if it's a function that's taking place and it's not at one of our parks, then who's responsible for it? Is the taxpayer responsible for it? Is the venue who's running it, you know, going to be carrying the charge for it? I mean, you know, I don't, you know, my thing is, the less taxes, the better for people. I don't, you know, people like to keep some money in their pocket once in a while, and, you know, we live in a, like, a small town, it's a beautiful, I mean, Bennington's a beautiful spot to be in, you know, like I said, I've been here 10 years. But I just, I keep reiterating, I just want to see some change here. And if I, if there's anything that has to change here, it has to be mindset of people. People can't stay stuck. They got, I don't care if, you know, listen, get up, if you scream and yell about something, I'll be listening, I got big ears, I'll listen, okay? But stand up and say something about stuff you don't like in this town, because if you don't do it, there are a lot of other people, you know, they walk by stuff, they see it, but they don't see it. And we can't keep operating like that in this town, you know? We're better than that.
Nancy?
Bennington taxpayers are very generous, we're paying about $700,000 a year for recreation. The rec center, the pool, the land, everything you see on Gate Street, owned and paid for with our local tax dollars. The building you see attached to our rec center isn't the town gym, it's a UCS building that had no right being there, it does nothing to benefit this town for recreation. Our officials are charging UCS a dollar a year for 99 years for rent, we should be getting at least $50,000. Many people were concerned about the Y takeover. The Y has never turned the money over to the town office that they've been collecting at our town pool and rec center. That was the agreement the Select Board and town officials made public and told the citizens of Bennington would happen. There's a reason the money's supposed to go to the town office. For two years, the Select Board has refused to answer my questions. Last month at the budget meeting, Stu said, yes, the Y is supposed to be turning the money over, but it's complicated. It wasn't complicated for our recreation department for 50 years. I believe we were set up, and unless you defeat the town budget, we're never going to get answers about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Since last September, Bennington taxpayers, you have been paying an extra $3,000 a month to put the Y at Catamount. That's a totally separate agreement, I don't believe was discussed. So, there's a lot of answers we need to understand about the Y. And everybody who works for the Y in Bennington answers to the woman in the Berkshires who runs Pittsfield, North Adams, and Bennington. Officials never have her at a public meeting because they don't want her to answer questions. So, we have a lot of questions, we need to start finding out about what we're paying and where the money's going. And remember, we pay the Y to run the rec center, we pay the budget they use, we just paid about $67,000 to fix the drain on the pool last year. So, there's a lot of discussions we have to have about our money, recreation, and the Ys.
Thank you. Ed?
So, the question was, do I support a skate park, and if I do, is it taxpayer responsibility?
Well, is there more the town could be doing to support recreation in the town, and should this be the responsibility of the taxpayer?
Gotcha, thank you. So, I do support a skate park. Imagine our youth, which is the future of Bennington, without outlet, right? So, I do support the skate park. Is it taxpayer, can the town and can the Select Board be doing more? Absolutely, we can always do more. Is it taxpayer responsibility? If a taxpayer has benefit, then likely it should be taxpayer responsibility. Taxpayer benefit has to be looked at from an interesting standpoint, right? I happen to have a 14-year-old who might use a skate park, so I might be a little bit biased. But years from now, when he's not interested in a skate park, as a taxpayer, I still might benefit because the youth of Bennington will have an outlet. So, I believe that those things need to be looked at as a community benefit, therefore should they be taxpayer responsibility.
Asher?
Do I support those two projects? Yes. Should it be a taxpayer responsibility? Yes and no. I'm going to put my teaching cap on for a moment, I want to see some hands from the audience and from my colleagues up here. How many of you like Lake Perrin? I'm seeing a lot of hands, I'm sure there'd be even more if, yeah, there we go. How many of you know Lake Perrin is on its way to becoming Swamp Perrin? I'm seeing a lot of hands now, too. For those of you who want to keep Lake Perrin beautiful, shouldn't the burden, the responsibility, at least fall a little bit on the town? Look, the Lake Perrin Park is a nonprofit, right? So, in the search for grant money for things like parks and recreation, I support turning over every stone and looking to any, you know, willing and competent source to write said grant, or to look for said grant. That being said, if Bennington does not act soon, Lake Perrin will likely become a swamp, and thus, less likely to draw visitors. And for those of you who do like it, I feel like, those of you who have been to Lake Perrin, I like to think all of us have been at least once, I would think that everybody would have raised their hands, at least for, do I like Lake Perrin? I should have raised my hand, too, because I do like Lake Perrin, and I do know it's becoming a swamp. So, I think that the Select Board should be more, what's the word I'm looking for? Proactive in looking for ways to handle the situation. If there's no money in the budget, which, let's face it, we have a massive budget already, it's bloated, let's look for ways to make it happen.
Thank you. Jack?
Yeah, so, I think recreation is an essential part of the town. I am somebody who is very often taking advantage of the wonderful recreational opportunities offered by Bennington. I like to hike the trail system, I play tennis at the rec center courts. Before the pandemic, I would even occasionally sense when the numbers drop, I go and work out at the gym there. And I think that having a lot of recreational opportunities is really important to attract people to come and live in Bennington, and one of the huge, huge assets that Bennington has is its natural beauty. And providing access to it for as many people as possible is an incredible thing that the town can do. And so, I do think that it is a town and a Select Board responsibility, and then it touches on a lot of different aspects of the community. I do also support the skate park, and for all the reasons that have been stated, I think it could be really incredible for the town. Another element that I have heard folks who are involved with the Skate Park Project talk about is their own experience with the kind of economy that can grow up around having something like a skate park in a town. There are lots of folks who might want to have a skate store associated with the park, and skate parks also, because of the communities they foster, have an international network of people who visit skate parks. It could be a hub of all kinds of different tourist and business opportunities, in addition to providing a really incredible recreation opportunity and connection opportunity for the youth of Bennington.
This is probably our last question before we go to closing arguments, I'm sorry we didn't get to every single question, but what would, what do you see, this, we're going to start with you, Donald, what do you think is the Select Board's number-one problem it faces and its top opportunity?
Well, in my humble opinion, I think the, one of the major issues with the Select Board is leadership, the lack of leadership. What's the top priority?
Number-one problem?
Number-one.
And number-one opportunity?
Well, people become stagnant. You know, when I look at Bennington and I look at people like Stu Hurd, he's been in office 34 years. Time to go. You look at the police chief, he's been in office 30 years. Where's the new vision? How can you have new vision when you've got these gentlemen in their position for all that time? Nothing changes. I hear, I go again with that, nothing changes. You get what you get, and if you allow people to stagnate and stay in a spot, and you don't call them on stuff, nothing changes. And I'm a simplistic guy, you know, you can use big words and fancy words, but listen, if you talk plain Jane to me, I understand. And I do understand what I'm saying to you tonight. I want to make it crystal clear to you, my whole thing for coming here tonight was to let you know that I'm tired of the old and I want in with the new, and it's time for the change. Thank you.
Nancy?
Well, I hope I've opened your eyes a little bit about most of the things you're not aware of. With the help of the late Rose Telford, twice we went out the last two times and got the majority of the 500 signatures for mayor. I support the Select Board system, but due to the corruption over the past seven years, I said, well, we'd be better off taking a shot on somebody we elect and get rid of ourselves than continuing the corruption. If you don't get out to vote, then nothing's going to change. I still support the Select Board system, but you've got to get people on the board that aren't part of the, call the machine, call it the Bennington Big Shots. If you've lived here long enough, you know who's in the group, they want to push their agenda, they don't want us to have a say. And you give Stu too much power. The Select Board is the employer and the supervisor of the town manager. There's very little Stu does without the knowledge, approval, and encouragement of the Select Board, at least the core members of the Select Board. And there are things the Select Board pushes through that Stu asks them not to. I'm not sticking up for either side, but again, Stu could be gone tomorrow, you've got the same problem. As I told you, televised meeting last year, our meetings are public, but they're not for the public, the Select Board does not answer citizens, that's a huge red flag. When your local Select Board has the nerve to say that, like I said, I don't care who they talk to, I don't care who their advisors are, this is pure entitlement, that is reason enough to defeat the budgets. Why would you give people money like that? To me, that's like a telemarketer, and you're giving them money when they call to scam you. Give these people a wake-up call and put somebody on the board that's going to put you first rather than last.
Ed?
Top problem and top opportunity?
Correct.
Top problem, our Select Board answers to a diverse population, right? A diverse community base, that's the biggest challenge right there. Being the receiver of opinion, information, votes, et cetera, from such a diverse town and group of people. Cooperation and coordination among themselves, part of the- Cooperation and coordination among themselves, part of the requirement there is that that body have the ability to get along and get work done. So there needs to be some improvement there. Their biggest opportunity is to provide information to the public. Now, the information is available. It just has to be shown to the public, right? If you're, you know, Nancy made some reference to some things that it takes forever to find. Let's make it easy for our residents to access the information that matters to them. Make sure that they understand how their government works. We covered some things tonight about how our government works. We are run by a select board that supervises a town manager. Our town manager doesn't have any authority. He reports to the select board. Most people don't know that, and they think that our manager is making decisions. The other thing is, if we provide the information, people will likely get more involved. And giving people a roadway or a roadmap to get involved is critically important. Coming and speaking at select board meetings is important, but it's only a part of being involved in town. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Asher?
I would identify the biggest problem being the budget. If we had the budget, and if Vermont had the budget to afford things like major improvements in infrastructure and healthcare and the like, I imagine we'd have done it already or at least be on our way to do it. The truth is, we don't. I'd like to spend a little bit more time talking about the opportunity. It's everyone here. People like Sarah and Nancy, people like Judy and Ezra, we are the reason that Bennington's select board is able to operate as well as it does, and we are the reason that it will operate better in the future. You know, part of moving, whoa, that's what happens when you have Tourette's and a microphone, Part of when I moved to Bennington, it wasn't just the seasonal climate or the mountains that drew me here, it was the people. The fact that there are six people up here running for two seats should tell you, there are so many opportunities in this town for improvement, for betterment. You've heard so many fantastic ideas from every single one of us on this stage, or rather, this podium's right here. I don't know what to call it.
Line of tables.
Line of tables. Thank you, Jack. Yes. There's so much potential in Bennington, and as new people move here, that only strengthens our town and its potential for making positive change, whether that's mitigating or overwhelming. And judging from what I've seen in the years I've lived here, I'd say we're on a pretty good start, and we're off to really wonderful things in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Asher. Jack?
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest problem is that the select board can't do everything, right? I think in a lot of instances, they want to do a lot of things, but it is not possible because of some very serious practicalities. I think the biggest concrete problem that is facing the select board and the town of Bennington and the state of Vermont is the upcoming end of statewide rental assistance and the precarity that that will put many people into. I think the biggest opportunity for the select board, for the town, and I feel like, as much as I like you, Asher, I think you stole my answer here, is the people and organizations that exist within the town. We have incredible resources within the town of Bennington that can be drawn upon to provide for the community. There are numerous institutions, and we haven't talked a lot about this. We've talked a lot about business. We haven't touched on the cultural life of Bennington that much. We talked a little bit about recreation, but we have the Bennington Museum, we have the Bennington Performing Arts Center, we have a world-class liberal arts college less than four miles from where we sit today. Really making sure that we make the most out of these other town assets, bringing them into the conversation, finding creative ways for them to be involved in solving the problems that face the town, that is crucially important, and I do worry that too often they are left out of this conversation.
Sarah?
Man, there's so many good answers, and you're right. Like, just everybody had so many great ideas. But I had a couple that weren't up there, so problem. I'll go with one that wasn't there and one that's not as great. So the one that's really, I think, important is that we really assist our police with anything that we can, retention and hiring. I don't know what we can do with hiring, but I think we really just need to put our thinking caps on. I know that's very just sophomoric, but anything that we can do to just help them retain, attract new police, new recruits, I think is important, and just support. Yeah, we're in, we think we all see we're in a crisis right now with that. We have an epidemic and just crime in general, and I think we've all heard that from our chief. And I think the opportunity exists a lot with the ARPA funds that we're receiving and possibly more private-public partnerships. So I really see that as a giant opportunity for our town.
Great. Well, we'll switch to the last part of the debate. Thank you guys for hanging in there, and we're gonna do closing arguments, three minutes for each candidate, and I'll start at the other end this time with Asher to do closing arguments. Closing comments, excuse me.
Arguments, comments.
We don't have to argue.
They're the same thing at this point. Gosh, there's so much I could say. I love that I'm running for select board. It gives me the pedestal opportunity to really have these sorts of conversations with folks, including this forum here. So thank you again, Sue, Cat TV, Bennington Firehouse, for hosting and really putting this together. I'm gonna use this time to talk about racism, and it's a really big problem, and it's questionable how much authority the select board has over it, although I'd like to bring it up as a town issue. I don't know if any of you have been paying attention to the news. I imagine most of us have because we're here. The fact that there's a civil rights lawsuit against our local hospital is atrocious. The fact that people of color in this town have been racially profiled is atrocious. The fact that a duly-elected state representative resigned and moved and left Bennington is atrocious. All these things are due to inherent racism, which, yes, affects all corners of our country. We have to deal with it here. It's not enough to paint a mural. It's wonderful, and I support it. I supported it then, I support it now, but it's performative. It's not enough. We need to do more to combat institutional and other forms of racism here, and I think it begins with listening to folks. You know, it breaks my heart seeing the town that I love succumb to such things, especially with the recent news about the hospital coming out. I'm running for select board because I want to help make Bennington a better place. As chairman of the SRC, I helped lobby for a mandate in Vermont for private hearing aid insurance. I was part of a group effort on that one. On the Southwest Tech School Board, I helped to ensure that gender identity would end up on the anti-discrimination policy. I teach kids in the classroom every day, some of whom come from this very town, so I've seen some of what the rough underbelly of our town is. That being said, I know we can do it together. Thank you all so much. I hope to earn your vote, and may the God of your choice bless you. Thank you.
Jack?
Yeah, so I have said before, and I will say again, that I am running for select board because I want us to have a safer, more caring, more connected, and more prosperous Bennington. And I think all of those things are interconnected. As a private citizen, I have tried to take action towards that goal. I have proactively started community-wide initiatives, bringing together people to address some of the challenges that face Bennington. And as we have heard tonight, and as we have discussed, there are a lot of challenges facing the town. But there are avenues for concrete action, and there is a lot, because I've talked to so many people about this. There is a lot of energy in the town wanting to address these challenges. People see what the challenges in the town are, and they want to take action. And I think making sure that people have avenues for action is of crucial importance. I think that also gets to some of what you've been talking about, Ed, in terms of making sure that there is really clear communication about how the town government will function and how people can get involved, both with the town government and with initiatives in the town. I'm also running because I care deeply about this community, and I want to work as hard as I possibly can to make it a better place. I see incredible opportunity in Bennington because even though there are these incredible challenges, there are incredible opportunities, incredible citizens, and incredible resources that can be drawn upon. And I do firmly believe that all of the issues we've heard about tonight can and should be addressed successfully by a town-wide effort, and I want to be a conduit for citizen energy to address those issues. I have my own ideas. I have my own viewpoints, but I want to hear from people. That's part of why I'm running, and I want to hear about what everyone wants to work on and help build town-wide systems that take that individual and that citizen energy and turn it into the town that we all, all, want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Yes, thank you. So thank you all for coming out tonight on Friday. And in closing, I feel good about my first term on the select board, and I'm excited about Bennington's future. New businesses have opened, there have been private investments in our community, and because of the pandemic, the town has received funds to take on important projects. It's an exciting time in Bennington. If reelected, I will continue to bring my experience as a small business owner, entrepreneur, property owner, landlord, and active member of the community. I understand that there needs to be a balance between making important investments in our community and ensuring that taxpayers' money is used wisely. I believe in transparency and that we must listen to the ideas and concerns of community members. I think it's important that board members are comfortable asking difficult questions, even though sometimes awkward. We must stay focused on enhancing our downtown and attracting and retaining residents. Although we face challenges, I'm very optimistic about our future and know that I'll do my part to make Bennington a successful. I hope to continue to represent you. Thanks.
Donald?
Well, thank you for having me tonight. You know, I was sitting here while Sarah was speaking, and, you know, Bible scripture came to my mind, and, you know, if I am offending anybody, I apologize to her in advance. But in the Book of James, there's a saying, it says, "I am the bread of life. Whoever believes in me will never be hungry, and whoever believes in me will never be thirsty." And you might say, well, what's that have to do with you sitting here on this panel? And I gotta tell you, you know, I don't make a whole lot of moves without praying, you know, and I thank God for allowing me to get here tonight and for Him to give me, or at least allow me to be a vessel, to give you the words that He wants me to present to you. You know, I'm not a perfect guy, so I'm not gonna sit here and try to convince you of that. I think you probably already know that. But what I will say is, if you see fit for me to be on a select board or preferably mayor if we ever get there, but, like I keep saying, we need change. And I'm the right guy, because I'm not gonna be a guy who's gonna be in the background. I'm gonna be a guy that's gonna be in your face. I'm gonna be talking to you about the nonsense that we have to deal with. And like Ms. White was saying earlier, you know, Ms. White, you know, I love Ms. White. I'll just say it out loud. You know what? She holds people accountable. Imagine that! And they get upset about it. Oh, well, you know, don't tell her something, because let me tell you, she gonna research. And that's what we need. We need more people like her. We need more people involved in this community. That's the only way the community's gonna change, more involvement. Once again, I want to thank Sue. I want to thank my friends who signed a petition for me to be on the ballot. You know, we had to go out and get 30 signatures in the beginning, and all those wonderful people that I stopped in the street, they were serving. I felt like an idiot, you know, but they signed it for me, you know, they put me on the ballot. I want to thank them. I also want to thank our brothers and sisters who are not able to be here, some people in nursing homes, some people hospitalized. But what I would say to them is, you know, you might not be here, you might not be able to get out and vote, but vote via absentee ballot, you know, because your vote is still matter. You know, you got a voice, and you need to use it. Thank you so much.
Nancy?
I appreciate the opportunity to be here and thank the Banner and Cat TV and the public who are here. I think Bennington is a welcoming town. I think Vermont is a welcoming town. I think you're gonna have idiots wherever you go, and I think too many of us have been thrown in with the idiots. You saw what Vermont was like after Hurricane Irene. Everybody came together. Vermonters are kind of quiet and keep to themselves. You may not talk to your neighbor much, but if something happens, something will show up on your porch or your door, and they just do it and take care of it. So I think Vermonters and the people of Bennington have kind of gotten a bad rap over the past couple of years. As far as select board, you are never gonna spend the time I have following up on these projects and programs and promises. And there are times I wish I hadn't started watching all these meetings 40 years ago, but when somebody throws out a one-liner and doesn't want to talk about it, zing, I go there and look for it. If somebody makes us a promise about a project or a budget or an agreement, we should be following up. I hope I opened your eyes on some things tonight, but if you let that budget pass, nothing's going to change. The budget we're voting on doesn't start until July. You need to defeat that budget. You have got to give these people in this town a wake-up call. The water and sewer bond, again, critical, you defeat it. We have more pressing projects to do first before the ones in the bond. So if you approve that bond next month, I guarantee you're gonna have a couple more million-dollar bond next year. Couple of years ago, people started using the buzzwords stakeholders and partners. Well, unfortunately, Bennington residents, you're not included. We are the stakeholders. If anybody wants to partner, they need to come to a meeting and include us. Give us the details and give us the answers. Finding information shouldn't be hard, but boy, it is in this town, and you've got to play 20 questions with everybody you're talking with. It didn't use to be this way 10 years ago, and it shouldn't be this way now. You have a lot of people, you have a lot of choices. For five years, I've tried to get you the answers, so hopefully things will change. End censorship on your select board. Thank you.
Ed?
Thank you to the Banner and Cat TV and the public. The quality of questions that were asked, the quality was great. That tells us where the heads of our voters are and what people are thinking about. No surprise, by the way. We heard a lot about change. I think that change is coming. That's inevitable because time means change, right? Some of you, if you've been paying attention up until tonight, you may have heard me say some of these things in the past, but they're worth repeating. An emphasis on crime, infrastructure, and the economy would bring positive change to Bennington and the surrounding area. As a member of the select board, I'm gonna take a hard look at those for Bennington immediately. In the area of crime, I look forward to working with the Community Policing Advisory Review Board. Great work is being done in that vein. Our residents need to be connected to the police department for all that it provides, including public safety, protection services, education, not just arresting people, right? Additionally, the community, the select board and that oversight board, needs to make sure that the police department has access to necessary resources to achieve that mission. Some of the most necessary resources include equipment, training for our law enforcement professionals, and the ability to cooperate with law enforcement professionals in towns outside of ours that impact our quality of life. I said this before when we were talking about crime and weapon, I'm sorry, drug and weapon crimes. It's no secret that our infrastructure is dated, worn, in some cases failing. That needs to be on the docket all the time, not just because we have an emergency or an, you know, a fire that we have to put out. If we watch those things on a regular and consistent basis... If we watch those things on a regular, consistent basis, we can plan ahead. It's just like we ought to be running our households, right? We know that a roof repair has to be saved for. We know that a, a water main repair has to be saved for. Those things need to be managed much more closely and the public needs access to that information. Tourism, I want to mention this is because it's important. Tourism is one of the top three industries, economic drivers for Vermont. In 2022, tourism generated $3 billion in revenue for the state. As a gateway to Vermont, Bennington naturally enjoys much of that tourism each year, particularly from Memorial Day to Columbus Day. But what about the rest of the year, right? In order to attract folks to live here and work here, that season has to be expanded to 12 months and that means we need to grow the economy with an emphasis on housing, job creation, education, healthcare, and recreation. Topics that we heard covered tonight. Then only will Bennington truly be a great place to live, work, and play. I have the experience to, to sit on the Select Board and represent Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody up here on this podium who is actually putting themselves out there for our community. We really appreciate it. Thank you to the audience who are sitting in here in the room, they filled the room for two hours. Those of you watching at home on Facebook or on Cat TV channel. This will be rebroadcast on both of our Facebook pages, the Bennington Banner Facebook page and Cat TV. So if you wanted to double-check an answer or if you have a friend who might want to watch it and couldn't tonight, pass that information along. Thanks to everybody for coming.